Businesses usually are restricted and wrote clauses for supply of the business.
Okay.
They're usually unaffected.
Great.
Good to know.
You can leave it at that for what you have now.
I didn't either.
Now, I remember Ms. Merrill talking, gosh, it's so long ago.
But you're probably gonna have to enlarge that.
I think ultimately what we'll probably do is a stormwater permit with the state is
I remember speaking with someone from the state.
between one and three acres. I suspect we'll probably, right now I've got probably about two acres of impervious area
Who would I have spoken with? And maybe if I go back through my notes, I might find it.
shown there. So I think we may expand the area depending on funding and make that parking lot bigger.
We would, you know, one of the issues is site distance.
But I don't know for sure.
Coming from the limerick side, and actually coming from both sides. What kind of food will the restaurant serve?
Correct.
And I spoke with someone at the state level. Is it pub kind of thing?
Yes, so there, it's gonna be very similar to their Bitterford location.
You probably know more than I do.
If anyone's been to their Bitterford location, it's pub food.
And there was something that he said the state would pay for as far as signage, far as signage
The menus, it's very good. If you haven't been, you should definitely check it out. It's very good.
I thought they had a fire there.
Did you hear the parking on the square footage of the building?
was concerned.
Yeah, so they, I believe they started up in the Rockland area and they kind of moved
And this would be for the...
down a couple of years ago to the Bitterford area.
And so...
That parking goes along with the, with the restrooms as well as how many seedings you have there, so how big the septic system will be.
Yep.
And we're gonna have a septic, septic system for the brewery.
That's what we were thinking was do a septic system for the brewery and then another septic system down the road for the pavilion restaurant.
So Matt had mentioned maybe temporarily using part of that brewery for something for people to sit in or something for temporary. Does that ring a bell to you?
He, I know he's mentioned it before and I don't know for sure if that's still what he's thinking. I will, I will touch base with him and find out if that's still the case.
Okay, well if that is...
When we come back with our full application, I'll make sure to spell that out.
You're gonna need a walkway between that parking area and that.
Yep.
If that is the case.
And obviously when you do come back, we'll need the layout of the inner building.
Yes. Yeah, we'll have full architectural plans for you. That'll show the, you know, elevation of the outside of the building and floor plans and...
You haven't done a solitoss up there yet?
We have, yes.
No design?
We have a preliminary septic system design that I've got to kind of tweak for this new building, but I've got, I've got a couple of preliminary designs that have been done, yes.
How many gallons, how many gallons a day is that gonna be?
I don't remember off the top of my head. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty good sized number. Yep.
Has there been any studies that breweries gonna require substantial water supply? Could be any studies as to whether you've got enough there to serve that...
Yeah, I think what we're gonna try to do is, is look back over the last couple years of the Bitterford Brewery location and get some ideas on how much water they have used and kind of scale that to what he's envisioning long-term for use here. And then we can come up with a number of how much water is needed and then try to figure out if, if we think a drilled well or a point well or what we're gonna need to do out here to be able to get that amount of water.
So how much water's in the other well on the other property? Have you ever looked at that?
We have not, no. It may not be a bad idea to do that, though.
Pete had a question.
The well we plan on using, have you already drilled that well?
We have not.
You have not?
Nope.
Say the water is not feasible for the brewery.
Yep.
Now, you're gonna have to import the water?
I suppose that could be a solution if, if we can't get a well that would be adequate for what he needs.
You could drill two wells or something.
We could, we could drill multiple wells or, I, I know we would prefer to be able to drill a well that could serve the, you know, needs of the, of the building. That would be our goal. But if, if, if we can't, then we'll have to look into alternatives, yes.
You're gonna need water for the pavilion as well.
Yes, correct. Yep.
I would think the well of the farm, if that's a drill well, I would tell you what you're gonna, pretty much what you're gonna get for water.
Yep.
Or a well driller who's familiar with the area, probably tell you.
Yep. Yeah, I can talk to Earl and ask him, you know, what he gets for water out of his existing well.
If he even knows.
Right. Or how, maybe he knows how deep it is or, you know, can give me some information.
Any more questions?
Is, it says, I guess, an existing trailer, is that staying there or is that just there for the time being?
That's just there now. I don't believe that's gonna stay. I think that's gonna be removed.
And that farm stand moves.
Correct. Yep.
And anything he's, was he gonna do his apple picking and all that? Is he got a spot for that? That they're gonna use this parking to pick the apples and whatever other fruit they got there?
Correct.
And have a stand out there.
He will, yeah. There'll be kind of like a temporary stand out there for people to be able to do that.
Will he have food trucks back this, this year?
Yes. He would, he would really like to be able to continue to do that.
That's good.
Do you know how many people are working inside the brewery?
I know the last time I talked to him, he thought five, but I will, I will confirm that.
'Cause it looks like you've only got three parking spots.
No, that's a, that's a loading dock.
Yeah, that's just for unloading.
That's the trucks.
Where, where...
Parking spots, huh?
Well, these three here look like three parking spots for...
That's the loading dock.
He said that was the loading dock.
And the rest of this, this truck will pull in like this and back up to the, to the building.
Yeah, we can add some more, we can add some more employee parking there to kind of make sure we've got enough. I'll ask Matt how many...
A loading dock would be on the building, not in a parking lot.
How many?
Yeah, you pull in like this and back up to the building or vice versa.
Most likely, most likely we haven't, I don't know exactly the answer to that, but I would guess that, that it would, yes. That's another aspect of, you know, the architect's gonna be working on to try to determine how we're gonna accomplish that.
So would parking have to be here for the brewery?
So you have a lot of these questions answered or we'll come back for...
Oh, yeah.
It should be...
Yeah, when we come back, we'll have a, you know, full application and...
A walking, a walkway between that parking...
Guys, guys, he's talking.
What, what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll kind of spell out a lot of these items that we talked about and how we've, you know, addressed them in our application is what I'll try to do.
So obviously if he has the brewery and he's selling the apples at the same time along with the pavilion, it's gonna take a lot of parking.
We don't have to worry...
Seventy spaces of parking there.
We don't have to worry about the pavilion right now because it's not part of the application. He'll be back in at a later date for the pavilion and then we'll address those issues in, at least in my mind, 'cause what we're dealing with, we can only deal with what he's presenting, not what he might do in the future.
He's only got five employees, he's an old stack, so, you know, he may have to expand that down the road.
Yeah. So when is your timeframe that you'd like to come back with a, your more formal plan? 'Cause once we have your application and accept it, then two weeks after that, we will hold a public hearing and, you know, the, about us would be notified, everybody who wants to could come in. And we had a fair turnout, as I recall, the last time.
We did.
And, and then we, 99% of the time, we make our decision that night as long as all the information has been presented, unless someone in the public presents something that is, you know, out of the ordinary or requires extra attention or something.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay. Our, our goal would be to move this, continue to move this forward. I, I've got a little bit of survey work to do before I'm ready to do the design, so I would imagine within a month, four to six weeks, I would be back to you guys.
We meet the first and third Mondays of the month.
Okay.
So you need to put that on your calendar.
And, and when does the board like an application to be submitted in advance of those meetings?
Well, we have this and, and quite frankly, we usually say two weeks, but we don't, to be very honest with you, we have a lot of information, so we don't need it two weeks in advance.
Okay.
We'll put you on a, on an anticipatory list for our third Monday in, in April.
Okay.
And then you can confirm with Craig.
I'll give you a month.
That's not Patriots Day, isn't it?
And if you want to...
I don't know. Wait a minute, we gotta find out if that's Patriots. Hold on just a minute, there's a holiday in there.
Which sometimes messes with our, we can't meet.
Let's see, Monday would be the 21st.
What's the third Monday, the 21st?
It says Easter on my calendar.
Oh, what did I say?
I mean, it's Sunday.
Easter's a Sunday.
I know, but then it says Easter the next day too, I don't know why, on my Google calendar.
Maybe it's Canada, Easter.
Do you envision the board wanting to do a site walk, another site walk with this project?
Well, is this the way you guys looked at it last time? 'Cause I didn't make it there. I originally thought all this was going on this side.
I went up and just looked at it, the entrance, I didn't, there was nothing really staked up there, it wasn't staked off.
All right.
Yeah, Patriots Day is the third Monday of the month.
All right, the third Monday is one, is the 21st.
Yep.
And that's Patriots Day. So what I will attempt to do now...
If he wants to do it, he may wait two more weeks.
So if you were to desire to meet and if we had anyone else who wanted to come in, we would do the 28th, as long as I can, as long as no other board has this room for that night.
That would be April 28th, is that what you're talking about?
Right, but, and then our next meeting, I don't know if the board wants to do this, it would mean two meetings in a row. The next Monday would be the 5th of April, so if, if...
May, right.
I mean, May, I'm sorry. So it might be that we would just, usually we skip that holiday meeting. And so the next scheduled meeting would be May, May 5th. And, and then we would hold the public hearing on May 19th.
Okay.
And that fits more in with your six weeks timeframe or whatever timeframe that you need, 'cause we're, well, today's the 17th.
Yeah, so six weeks would be about May 5th.
Yeah. It would be May 5th, six weeks.
Is that acceptable time-wise?
Yeah. Why don't we, why don't we aim for that?
Aim for that, okay.
And if, if I'm ahead of schedule or behind schedule, I can, I can, yeah, I'll let you know.
If you're ahead of schedule, well, you are.
Yeah.
But right now, let's say that our, it will be, May 5th will be our next meeting.
Sounds great.
May 5th.
Yep.
So that means you'd like a submission...
Our next meeting with you.
Right.
Yeah.
So a submission would be, what's two weeks before that?
Well, you can, you know, I'm saying that you, I'm saying that you can do, I'm saying that you can do the submission the week before because you've already submitting these, submitted these preliminary plans.
Okay.
So if you wanted to get your, your final plans in the week of the 28th, that would be acceptable.
Okay.
We've done a lot more, a lot shorter timeframes, but I think where you've given quite a bit of information here tonight that...
So we're gonna do a site walk?
Now, that's the determination, I would assume if the board wants to do a site walk, you might wanna do it closer to the meeting?
May 5th.
If you do a site walk, you wanna do it in April.
Would we wanna do a site walk closer to the meeting or...
Or do we not, do we...
Things will dry by then, maybe.
Yeah, it would, yeah, right now it might be kind of wet.
It won't be a May.
Do we need to do another site walk because we've already been out there?
I'm pretty familiar with the contour of the land. I don't think, you know...
And he had it pretty much laid out before, you know.
I mean, I, I understand what he's got.
I'll leave it up to you guys whether you do...
Be nice to see why the buildings...
Yeah, would you have anything staked out?
I can have whatever you guys want staked out.
I mean, that would be nice, just four corners of that and maybe four corners of that and a couple of stakes going up the road.
All right, so let's say that if we're going to do a site walk, we will do it sometime around the end of April. That would, should give you time to, and we usually do them, well, now that the clocks have changed, we have, you know, we can do them afternoons instead of Saturdays.
Yep.
So if... Clock, does that work, at 3:30? Which works for everybody.
Tuesday.
Come near to me. I'm gonna go to 3.
At 3.
Site walk at 3, yep.
So if I stake out the four corners of the building, four corners of the parking lot, is that what you guys are looking for? Do you, do you need anything more than that?
I would say something like that.
You mentioned just a few stakes up at the center of the road, center of the road.
Yeah, showing where the road's gonna go off to.
Something to show where the road is gonna be.
And probably, what about the parking area?
The parking lot, the building in the center of the drive coming in.
Yep, we can do that.
Is there like a dirt road going up there now or...
There's not.
Nothing, okay.
Nope.
Okay, yeah, that would be good then.
Yep.
That's...
So the 28th, we have a planning board and then the site walk...
No, we're not doing planning.
Oh, we're not doing that one, okay.
No, we're not meeting until that first week in May.
On May.
I mean, we may have more meetings in April, but with him, with this particular client, their...
May 5th.
May 5th.
Yes.
But there will be other meetings scheduled in April depending on who wants, else wants to come in. Okay, do you have any more questions for us?
I do not. I really appreciate you guys giving us some direction this night, this evening, and we'll see you on May 5th.
Okay, well, we'll actually see you on the 29th.
Oh, good call. Yes, you will.
And someone, it doesn't have to be you, but someone representing the company will need to be there.
Yep, I'll be there.
You'll be there, okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Merrill, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Grace, can I have my map now? Oh, do you need the map?
Oh, I thought you had two.
No, I, that was...
So I have none, it's all...
You want one, I'll get you one, I got one other thing in there.
Mr. Nelson, hello.
I like maps.
Hi, Mr. Nelson, hello. You wanna go up to the mic, please? So as I recall, when we last saw you, we were going to, we were asking you to come back just to let us know if you had gotten any pricing for whatever solution you were going to suggest for the potholes, et cetera, in your, in your, in front of your, your business. So have you come up with some ideas?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? Sounds to, looks to me like you've got a.
Did you injure yourself?
No, it's, uh, I don't think there's enough for everybody at all.
Okay.
That's, that's, hey, we can share. You can put one down there, we can put one down there.
This is an estimate?
Yeah, then Craig should have one and.
From, what, from the construction company?
Yeah, we can share. No, you can go back and, actually what you should do is, is if you need to sit.
I'm good. At least, I can, I can stand.
Okay, so just so you can speak into the mic and, and other people can hear.
Well, basically, it took a couple of attempts. Soon as the snow was clearing, we attempted it. I had, uh, a, a neighbor with a piece of yard equipment come down, and I wanted to at least get, uh, a sample of the, the worst area. How deep it was, possibly we had to go, and we made it about four inches down, it was still frozen.
Yeah, that's kind of.
He didn't have a great big piece of equipment, it's a piece, it's a yard tractor with a backhoe, so. It took about, I don't know, and half a week, three quarters of a week. And I did get Jeremiah to come down. Uh, he's a good friend of mine. So this price is a friend and a, also a customer at times, type of price.
Right, and exactly what kind of material were you gonna use?
It would be, the only thing that's not on the little map that I attempted to draw.
Yep.
And I did put the north and south, because the last time, there was discrepancies on understanding.
So you really didn't have to do around the entire thing? It was more.
The spot that said blend, if you see the arrows about that area, the blend area, realistically, aside from all of this, could be, we don't have a huge problem with it.
Right, exactly.
It's that spot where two pieces of land of different types are coming together.
Yeah.
I do get some mud here and there, but even in the mud season, I can come all the way around to that last arrow of blend.
So it's basically in front of the forty-five foot length that you have here, or whatever it is.
But in order to fix the part between the house and the garage, which is the.
Yes.
Um, the only thing that's not on there, I have removed eight to twelve inches of soil.
Yep.
That has to go all the way around, because of that blend area, which is not as.
Won't that mess up your blend?
It's gonna have to go. Basically, if we do it, we go beyond, you gotta go a little bit beyond, because it's progressive. So it's like, get it all. So basically, from where blend starts on the north side.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about, let me, let me see if I understand that. As you make the turn there on the corner, by where the office door is.
Yep.
That's about.
So this whole area.
That's, that was our concern.
But when you come around here.
From here?
It, it starts to get pretty good.
Yep.
Okay.
And it starts to, like you said, it's kind of progressive.
So you're gonna take eight to twelve inches out, and then you're gonna grade up to the.
It's gonna be eight to twelve, I mean, we don't know, there's questions.
Why would you go to the expense of doing all that if you don't have to? That's my question.
It's more the way to fix it, right. It's either, if I keep dumping gravel, my wife works for NUCO.
Oh, okay.
And can bring home sixteen-yard dump trucks, gravel once in a while.
Okay, I just was curious, okay.
And we've done it, so across this area, right between the house and the garage.
Yep.
A few times, and when you first put it down.
Looks, it's great.
Great, but it just, it goes down in, and it's like.
So you know what you have to do, okay, fine, okay.
So basically, band-aiding any further?
Will only cost you more later.
It's only going to cost more.
Right, exactly, okay.
So that, being said, the side on the north side, ice got, just needs grading, I mean, it might use dusting and gravel, but it's good.
Our concern wasn't so much up on the north side.
Okay, and that's the side, it's mostly the business side.
Well.
This side is in question.
No, you're not wrong at all, you're right. I, I think I'm wrong. When we, when, I think when we first started talking about this.
We had north and south.
I know, I made the assumption wrongly, I found out later, that you don't use that area for the business.
If I, if that area, I'm not gonna say it doesn't get used at all, I don't, I, I do not want at all to mislead anybody. That area is not typically to be used, right now, if you drive by, there's a truck parked between the house and the garage, right against the garage. But that's, customers don't typically come through there, visitors might.
They use the back.
It's usually back, and the entrance for the garage is back. I don't use that front doors.
So do we have a right?
I guess my question at this point for the board is, I was under the original impression that this was kind of a circular affair where the customers came in here, but they, they don't, they come in down here.
And they stop about here.
And park out here.
Typically, you have your occasion, you know.
So that's none of our business.
Is that any of our business at all, I guess? I, I don't know, I, I.
In other words.
I thought it was incorporated, but since it's not, then what's it?
Is there no entrance on the road?
No.
No, no.
What happened was, if you look at Google Maps, it looks like it's a circular driveway.
Right.
We bought the home, we looked at the home. This mud that we're dealing with.
So the mud issue.
Is only, my wife puts straw through the shovel to drain all the water off. And we're able to drive on it now.
Okay.
So mud season comes, it lasts, if you get torrential rain for a couple of weeks, it's there, but other than that, in a month after May, we're not gonna even.
Push him to spence over six thousand.
It drives all the way around, we bought the house.
I'm not gonna go far.
Not knowing that the front driveway.
Yeah.
They used as a driveway for ten years, which made it a driveway, but it was never made into a driveway.
Right, they never put gravel down, they just drove on the lawn.
They never made it, right, they started parking on the lawn until it was a hushu.
So you're willing to spend this about May?
No, I'm, I'm.
If I, you guys, no, I had doctor's appointments this week, you guys know a little bit of my history, I've had some sort of injury.
Yeah.
I've had, this one's been replaced, and it goes messed up upon replacement. I went zero months, uh, nine months zero weight bearing, because they split my femur right down to the block.
I, I think we can sort of, I think we can sort of, in my mind, bring this discussion to a conclusion. I think there was a misunderstanding on the board's part about where your entrance and where your, where, where it was gonna be. I personally, this is me speaking right now, I am not, and I will not vote for you to spend over six thousand dollars for, um, what is your personal space for your house, but the driveway to your house. If you guys wanna drive through mud, go far. To be fair, I mean, you know, I, I don't mean to be.
What's the point, George?
What?
What's the point of having him do anything?
Huh?
What's the point of having him do anything?
Well, that's it, that's what I'm saying, don't, he doesn't have to do anything.
I was under the impression that this was, this was a circular thing, I'm wrong, it's not. So this, it's really none of our business on this piece, really.
So it becomes a personal decision if you wanna do it.
You want it, right, but we just don't have.
You want it someday, how about it?
So do it when you can get to it, but doesn't have to be now.
Well, he's gonna misunderstand what you're saying.
Okay.
We, and, we are withdrawing our, this, from our expectations of you.
I understand.
You can do whatever you want in front of your house.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate patience.
But from the, um, north side, down to the, um, you know.
Band, the whole band.
Yeah, yeah. That is okay, so you don't need to.
Pretty much, I mean, it could be so little.
Yeah, we, we, you're okay there. Whatever you wanna do, between you and your wife and, in front of your house, you go far. You do not have to come before the planning board, you do not have to sign a contract for us or anything. Pete, yes.
Okay, Greg.
Now, that's my opinion, I'm assuming.
I understand. Greg, before this all came here, what, what would you, you requested him to do, not to get the perfect?
Well, this is what it was, we, we thought he was coming in here, and, and, and we wanted it built up so that it met these standards here. And this is what was gonna cost him, almost seven thousand dollars, and we're saying now we don't want that. It's none of our business.
What I'm saying is.
Your office is in the garage?
It's part of the garage, yeah.
Yeah, Peter, Peter is asking a question here.
Now, what I'm saying.
Close them.
Greg.
Yeah, that's good.
The, uh, what are you looking for him to do?
It is not Craig's decision, it is the planning board's decision. And, and I, what I have just said is that we have no longer have any requirement for him to do anything from the business side, which is the north side. And he can do whatever he wants in front of his house, it's his driveway. We cannot tell a person what to do in their driveway. So from our point of view, from here on out, is that Mr. Nelson, from his business point of view, is okay.
How would you just kill him?
Because Bob thought that he was using the driveway, which he wasn't using, it was been a mistake. It was a mistake, and we're just saying that this is the end of it.
But this, this driveway here is the driveway to your house? I thought the driveway was on the right hand side of your house.
No, that's exactly how it looks, you see the house to the, this garage is in the middle of the hushu, and we are to one side on that south side. It's a hushu driveway, so it.
The driveway goes between the house and the garage.
But this area on the, the north side is where any, uh, two garage doors are on that side of the garage. Those get used. The one between the house and the garage gets open so rarely, and if the ground is solid out front, and I do have a box truck right there right now, it's parked there. I got trapped there for a bit, but, uh, very rarely does that ever get.
Yeah. Is, is anyone in disagreement with what I've just said? I mean, we don't need to badger this anymore unless there's strong disagreement. No, no, all right, okay.
Fence issue.
So we're down to.
Where are the doors for the garage?
On the north side, on the north side.
My north side.
Well, there's a door there too, but that's where he enters to the garage.
And the only other issue, yes, right, right. So the only other issue is that once the, uh, once the ground frost eaves leave, you have the fence up in June, and we'll, Craig will be checking on that.
And I guarantee you, throughout the summer, that will be done.
Yeah.
We don't enjoy that mud, because that's out of parking.
We're done with the driveway, we are done with the driveway, you can do whatever you want at your driveway.
In good faith, I just wanted to explain.
My thing to you now is, the only thing that concerns this planning board is that you put the fence up in, by June, whatever it was.
Think it was June first.
First of June.
Yes.
After that, that's it, okay? You don't have to come back, Craig will check to see that you got the fence up. If you're smart, you'll get it up, and you won't ever hear from us again.
We want it up.
So anyway.
Joyce, we had one more, one more thing, um, Craig mentioned was the, um, putting up something that would, um.
Hide that junk.
Be a little buffer for the, where he stores his tires and stuff like that.
Do you see that little area that's labeled junk, that little box off the garage?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, might be slightly disproportionate, it's not much bigger than that.
I thought we had talked about that last time, that he was gonna do that.
I think I, I would like to box that in anyway, so.
And as long as you don't, don't pack more than three unregistered vehicles, you, you know that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all righty, we're all set. Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Nelson.
Oh, as far as tires go, we did, I don't wanna, because I don't wanna waste you guys' time down. The place that I've been dealing with is BDS. It's a, it's a tire disposal company, they come around in a trash truck, and they pick them up.
Okay.
They usually do have a minimum pickup, and it's like thirty tires of a minimum, so.
But that's what your little shed is for.
Two or three dollars getting rid of a tire versus our dump, depending on the day, I was paying fifteen dollars a tire.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not kidding you.
Yeah, okay, so you, you, you have, you have worked out a solution for that, and you're not gonna have a pile of tires on display in the back of the house, okay? All right. As long as Craig, you know.
Craig knows where I'm at, he knows.
All right.
I got your number.
Yep, we appreciate you coming in, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And take care of yourself, okay? All right.
See you June. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
All right, let's go.
One quickie, I don't have it in front of me. I don't think I do.
Now, you know, um, he's, I mean, I, I'm not trying, but I've got, I've got this drawn up, this is, this is not, this, there's his house.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So this is the driveway we're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but I think there's a driveway here too, I think.
No, there isn't.
No, there's nothing there, just a stone wall back there.
No, no.
There's a string, toward the back.
Yeah, way out there.
I don't have my automobile stuff.
So what if he comes back and he doesn't wanna put the fence up?
Well, then he's gonna have a problem.
Then he has to come back to us.
He's, that, that would not be.
He should be happy with it.
That would not be the smartest thing on his part, not to put the fence up.
Well, I don't know, he's already got it.
Well, we'll just have to wait and see, we'll just have to wait and see. I, I just wanted to bring to your attention something I did without consulting any of you, and if you want me to change it, I will. This is in the automobile graveyard thing, and I don't expect you to have it in front of you, it's just one word that I added. And I've gotta find it, I think it was in.
In definitions?
I think so.
Okay.
I, I, I think.
Um, back page, definitions.
Oh, did I put it in here? I think it was under the hobbyist.
I think, I think you're looking at this right here.
What?
Is this on the law?
Ah, yeah.
You added that.
No, no, I know, no, I added this word, it's, it's in.
That, that's what I mean, yeah, right here.
It's in, is it in the minutes?
What, is that in this week's minutes?
It's in the minutes, yeah, and, uh, it needs to be there, that's a good catch, actually, I think.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, I, I did. I, I added the word drivable, if you look under definitions, second paragraph down, chair fully moved to the definition of an automobile hobbyist. And it said, uh, so it should be, it, an automobile hobbyist is a person who acquires, repairs slash restores to original or modified original condition, a drivable slash fully operational vehicle. So drivable was the word that I added, and the reason I added it is because to me, it was just one massive loophole that somebody could bring in any kind of unregistered vehicle they wanted, and, and.
That was twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years old, and call it a hobbyist, because that's how, that's how new the vehicles are.
Well, they, I, I just feel that the word drivable just makes it.
Year two thousand is now antique auto.
Well, anyway.
Where's drivable though?
In, under the definition of hobbyist.
It's in there, Joyce.
It's not in that part.
It wasn't in the original, I added it. Yeah, we mustn't talk about it night and day.
How about, did you didn't they? How did it in there?
I was gonna ask you, George.
Yeah.
I think I stated.
This is a hobbyist.
No, 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 this is, no, no, this is the proposed ordinance change.
Oh, right here.
Remember we've been talking about automobile graveyards, automobile.
Come on, it's got it.
Yeah, it's got them.
No, it had nothing to do with him, nothing to do with him, no.
I have a few.
All right, so anyway, I just wanted to be sure that everybody agreed with that. All right, can we now go to the minutes of, of.
Some stuff like that, so.
If you register as an antique auto.
Can we now go to the minutes of the last meeting, which was March third? I have a couple of, in the workshop meeting to overview, to review ordinance for junkyards, it should say automobile graveyard, junkyards, recycling business and hobbyist. We didn't just talk about junkyards, we taught, the whole purpose of this was to talk about the automobile, so the headline should say, are you with me?
Yeah, I'll put them all in just.
Yeah, the ones that are at the end of the next sentence should all be at the top.
Yeah. Uh, the la, the last paragraph, this is just a typo kind of thing, graveyard should go up under the, you know, it was spacing thing, that's all.
Graveyard's in there.
No, no, did you see how graveyard is the last word at the end of the second paragraph down? See how?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
I fixed that, I don't know why.
Well, all right, well, maybe, this was just in, maybe in your draft you handed out tonight, it's fixed. I'm working off the minutes, I got off my computer. And on the second page under definitions, um, you had hobby, hobby and hobbyist, they are not the same thing. There should be the definition for hobbyist, which came, comes out of the, of the, of our work, and then a separate definition for hobbyist.
For hobbyist?
Well, you, you, in the, under definitions, one, two, three, third paragraph down, she then read the definition of hobby hobbyist. There are.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the same thing.
No, no, they are two definite definitions.
Their own?
They are, and they're in the, the body of the ordinance. So what you need to put in here is the definition of a hobbyist.
Do I have that somewhere in the document?
You should have, you, you've got the document, if you, you should have the documents. So if you don't, you and I can talk about that in another, at a, in another time. I just want you to know that that needs to be changed.
Should be saying that hobbyist is a, a quiet, yes, restores.
Yeah, right, but she doesn't have, then we need it, we have a separate definition for hobby. They're the two separate definitions, she just has to get the two definitions in there.
Hobby's a business, hobbyist is a person.
No, hobby, a hobby is what you do, a hobbyist who is the person that does it. Yeah. Um, one, two, three, four, five, two more paragraphs down below that, um, talking about Chair Foley said you hope this ordinance would be voted on in November with a public hearing in June and then the select board could have a hearing in September.
What page do you want?
Same page, two, two paragraphs down from where we were just talking.
On page two?
Page two, yep. Third paragraph up from the bottom, very last sentence in that paragraph should be September or October. I wasn't dictating when the select board have their public hearing, they just, state law requires it to have a certain time before them. And then, um.
So you want me only to add or October?
No, just get rid of in September.
Yeah, they, they, they can have a sub, public, yeah.
I'm supposed to get rid of something?
Yeah.
Get rid of in September.
Just.
Because the select board could.
Have a public meeting.
And it shouldn't say could, it should say then the select board would.
Will have, because a lot, state laws, great grace.
Yes.
Would have a hearing?
Will have a public hearing.
Yes.
Period.
Period, yeah.
And the select board will get to figure out when that is.
So we're leaving all the ones out of that?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. And then the only other thing is on the last page.
Oh, there was a typo.
Yes, yeah, I saw the typo.
Yeah, that's nothing, that's all I had, anybody else have any other?
Nelseto change.
Yeah. Anybody else have any other?
Um, I just had a question, maybe it's how it should be, the paragraph right above where you were talking, the board felt the temporary storage, should that say, um, it refers to car accident repair shop?
Where, where are we, Grace?
I'm on page two.
Yeah, that's in, that's in.
And it says, the board felt that temporary storage should be left out of this section of the ordinance because it refers to car accident repair shop.
It's a repair that crashed a car, body shop.
Like a body shop where the car sits there for a month waiting for parts.
Well, it's one of.
I, I used the word, I think George used, automobile repair shop.
Yeah, but you have accidents.
You have an accident, though.
Yeah, just take.
Well, it's there because of an accident.
Well, that's okay, we should take it out.
Okay, car repair shop?
Period.
It just sounded odd, sorry.
Yep.
No, I hear you.
On page two on the last paragraph, do we even need that? That's redundant from what.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was true, yeah.
Let's just take that out.
Take that paragraph right out.
Attached is the document.
The last one on page two.
Yeah, starts with attached.
Bob Gervais.
Just take that out, because she's already got it.
Just take Bob out.
No, 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 wait a minute, what are we talking about?
It's the same exact thing as is up in.
Show me, Bob.
Well, no, he.
Yeah, I know, but where, where is it redundant to?
Right here, you listed, you put it in here.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, yeah, that's true.
So why do we need that?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
I didn't realize I put that up there.
Yeah, that's true, so we can take out the last.
Yeah, the last paragraph, just strike that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay. Any other changes?
Wow.
And Donna, you said you got the typo on page three and you got adjourned added to it?
Yes, I've adjourned.
Okay.
I edited the adjourned. That last page.
Yeah.
I did not have the audio from.
Okay.
From the meeting, and I went to my sheets of paper from the speaker we had up here.
Which we're not gonna do anymore.
And, and so that, that one that starts under discussion on the very last page?
Discussion.
Um, so, review minutes, the third to last paragraph that says under discussion.
Why is that even in there?
We're on page three.
Three.
Yep.
Third paragraph up.
Under discussion?
Yes.
Third paragraph's up from the bottom.
I don't have that paragraph.
It's a sentence, it's, it's one line.
It's just a one-line sentence.
And, and it's, it's got a strange typo, so I was just making sure you had caught it.
Page one.